So I would pass you out to this point, board members. Just an update on our marketing for our district. Marketing slash communication and it's for the 2015-16 school year. This includes most of the things that we've done in relation to market our district, but not everything. So what you can see at the top, so we've broken it down kind of into three sections. One is to NTS Communications, one is for Qpress Design, and one is Other. So NTS Communications is the company who we are working with to provide more professional look to the marketing and branding and communication going on in our district. So if you can see that the first expense was for branding for the high school. Twelve thousand eight hundred and twenty-five and what this really encompass was a lot of pictures, a lot of media with kids, a lot of media with staff to come up with information that ultimately would link to how we're going to more effectively ground our Rancho High School. The second thing on there were the actual, some of the actual products that were done to market or more communicate more effectively regarding our Rancho High School. As you can see, and I surely should have brought copies, I didn't get a chance to bring copies on some of these things, were some of the bookmarks, the banners, some of the folders, some of the decals that were done. If you know, there's also a new logo for our Rancho High School that you see and I think it's gaining momentum. The next, the next expense was for the Allen Ochoa Prep Academy. And this was to do those different things you mentioned there, the postcard, the banner, the table skirt, the newspaper ad that we did put in the newspaper. Next one was for the billboard designs which you see up around in the more, the, what was that, the southern, south west, western, southwestern part of Pico Rivera and, and adjacent area. And that is for the billboard designs that are, that are, that we're doing to promote Allen Ochoa Prep Academy. Next one was the brochure that we are going to be mailing to all current eighth graders and all staff. I feel it's a brochure and that is gonna, I think, pop to, into our community. I think some of the pretty amazing things happened in our Rancho High School. They're in the midst of doing that work right now and we should begin, that should probably be in the mail sometime early next week, getting out to our community. And we felt it was important to give to staff because many times I think our staff don't know of the amazing things happening at our Rancho High School. So that's gonna be going to all staff also. Qpress is usually when we put something together, we send it then to a company who then does it for us. They do a pretty good job for us, but they're not a professional communications firm. But they do put some of the things for us together. And so these are some of the things we've done with them. We've done the Second to None Newsletter, we did, with the Attendance Campaign for then the Spanish part of the newsletter, the preschool postcard that we did for our district, Transitional Kinder for Dual Language Act, and that was for South Rancho Dual Language Academy, the Allen Ochoa Prep Academy Postcard, and then the ERUSD Facilities Newsletter that was just sent to homes probably about two, two and a half weeks ago. And then the last one were newspaper advertisements that we've done this past year. We did an ERHS Newspaper Advertisement Mr. Fritos, remember more or less when we did that? I know because it was a, I wanna say it was about three or four months ago, was that about right? Because again, we were trying to promote our Rancho High School. I know we did it in the Sangre de Valle Tribune, Pasadena Star News.
And this last one was like two months ago.
About two months ago, okay. And then we just recently did the Allen Ochoa Prep Academy Newspaper Advertisement. Again, publicizing Allen Ochoa Prep Academy. So these are most of the expenses, well, it's not included in here because it's really not related to these companies per se. For instance, we've done T-shirts. If you know that for every kindergarten, we started doing this last year and we, we footed the bill for it from the district. It's a great idea coming from the high school where every kindergartner in our district gets a Future Don T-shirt. And those are, those are, those are pretty cool, so this is the second year we're doing it. So at this point, we have two grades of students who receive Future Don T-shirts. And our goal is as we build this, that we're building that concept of stay with us here in our Rancho. So there, there may be some other things we've done, but this is the majority of the work we've done for, for, for our district. But usually, when the high school comes up with an idea and they can't fund that, usually we try to fund it.
Mr. Elindo, for the brochures that are going out to the, to the homes.
Yes.
We're also going to have a supply available to put in the library, the city hall.
Definitely. We're making from five hundred, we're making, I think in the beginning, I think five hundred extra and they can do it back to the five hundred. So we'll do them as we need them.
Thank you, Mr. Elindo. Dr. Moreno. Mr. Elindo, we have anticipated additional marketing costs for the district and for the academy or the business pretty much.
No, this isn't it because the next thing we're working on, Dr. Moreno and board members, is what we're actually working on now because we do need to do it there because we're not just losing kids at one particular grade level, it's really across our district. And so we're gonna be doing something similar for each of our schools. So the goal will be is that they will come out with some type of, not as thick a brochure as the high school, but a mini brochure for each one of our elementary schools. And then what that will then end up being is something a little bit bigger, but again, probably no more than the high school, I don't think, a brochure for a district. But again, it's letting people know about the awesome things happening in our district. So that's still, that's more work to come that the company's, the company's gonna help us do. That'll probably be the major, that'd be the last major part in relation to marketing and communication for our district. There's one last thing I do wanna do. We talked about it today because one of the things I wanna begin moving forward on is the concept of providing our community that we have, they have two choices. They have our Rancho High School and they have Allen Ochoa Prep Academy. So what I'd like to be able to do is send a possibly eight and a half by eleven card that might be a diagonal split. Pico Rivera or our Rancho has two choices now, our Rancho High School, Allen Ochoa Prep Academy, using some of the similar work from the billboards and some of the similar work, I mean, for both schools in their billboards and putting that on and then going to every home in Pico Rivera also. But trying to get more of the word out, I will share one other thing because that's in addition to what you're talking about. I'm learning how to use and how to boost information about our district, but also about each of our schools. And that's through Facebook. Most of the adults within our district, not, not, I'll say most parents, I think in our district use Facebook. I think some use Twitter, but most students are on the Twitter side. We're after really both groups of people. And so what I'm learning how to do is how do we get information to people who currently don't come to the Rancho Unified School District, but who live in Pico Rivera? And so we're trying to learn how to do that to get that information to them because one of the things we're, we're seeing is that not enough people know about the awesome programs going on in the district. So this is still part of our issue, which we're gonna continue. We're gonna learn how to get information in their hands so they know again about the positive programs across our district.
When is the, the budget allocated for marketing and advertising?
For what period of time?
Well, we're still in this program here. So, but then this marketing will continue.
We're, we're, we're gonna have to continue in one way or another where we, whether we continue with NTS Communications or some other way, we still will need to get information out to our school community. So we're gonna have to, oh, we're gonna have to continue to do this in, you know, in the year to come? I don't think there's any doubt about it. I think that's just the way of the, the way it goes for school districts right now. We have to continually communicate what we're doing because the other school districts around us, I don't know if they're doing it or not, but the fact is, we, we just need to make sure that our community knows what we're doing.
Okay. One, just one comment so I can finish my time. And it is important because this is really the only way that we're gonna get the word out there. And the more we put it out there, the more, more people will definitely be informed. But the reason why I raise this question is because in anything that we do, we always have an allocated budget. So my question then is, I'm sure there's an allocated budget, so that once we reach this budget, then we need to rethink and see where we're at. I understand that we need to continue moving in that direction, but I'm just wanting to know if there is an allocated budget for the marketing and advertising.
What we did this year, Dr. Moreno, was the superintendent, at the beginning of the year, asked me to set aside some funds for a variety of what we call district initiated initiatives. And it was mostly from cabinet and we set aside half a million dollars. That included marketing, included procurement for schools that didn't have enough funding for certain programs, positions that were needed, anything that came in cabinet or superintendent discussions. We did that and as of the middle of the year, we allocated about an additional a hundred thousand dollars to complete the year and we have not used up the entire amount. So as we build the budget for next year, we're gonna start again with half a million dollars and the discretion of, of the needs of the year, that can be augmented when we do the mid-year evaluation or not. But for this year, it was an amount that was, likes to use for a variety of things, that, marketing.
I just wanna add on to that. One of the things we're doing, Dr. Moreno, I'm not into marketing, I'm not a marketer. And so as we're doing some of these things, I don't know some of the costs, to be honest with you. We're gonna learn, we're, I'll say, we're learning as we're going. That's, to be honest, that's what we're doing. You know, the, the company we're working with, they can identify something, hey, what about this? But we're gonna say, ah, no, we don't wanna do that. So, and then we're gonna have ideas and maybe the company doesn't come up with. Because I don't go to the company for every single idea related to the marketing that we're doing. So, so we gotta be honest with you, is we're learning as we're going how to do this. So, you know, as far as a budget, we're gonna make sure we have money set aside, but I have a feeling more than likely, as we learn how to do this, we're probably gonna have to do more of it. I think most companies are successful companies in business, they usually set aside a pretty decent amount of money for marketing, right? But I know we don't have that amount of money, but I know we have to, again, communicate more effectively about our district.
Would you, would you learn?
Sure. So, I mean, I think we, we should continue with the process of rebranding our district. It's something that we've all talked about, something that the community's talked about a lot, about rebranding our district, putting, and I'm glad that we're, we're moving that direction. For me, it's not fast enough. To me, it's not fast enough getting the word out there about what the great things are happening in our Rancho. I know that the high school has had squats about this multiple times, but it's really getting, getting the word out there. And I know the majority of the money, of course, has to be spent towards rebranding our Rancho because if there's any place that we need the most rebranding, it's gonna be at the high school level. And because we're, we're losing students K through twelve, we have to really invent, really look at ways to really put out the great things that are happening in our district. And that's what this is really about. So I, I appreciate the budget, the numbers coming forward. I'm still concerned about when are the banners going up? Because that's something we talked and talked and talked about and I really don't wanna talk about, again, I just want it done already because I see that we have the design of the banners on this, but I don't see any banners up. And that's really concerning to me because I, we, that needs to be done, it should've been done a long time ago. I also think because the Allen Ochoa Prep Academy's a brand new school, we are gonna have to spend some, invest some money in, you know, advertising for that, putting that out there. But the majority of our high school, each student's aren't gonna be going to our Rancho High School. So rightfully so that as this budget shows that the majority of the money is going to rebrand our Rancho High School, the new logo, et cetera. So I appreciate the work that's been done so far, but for me, I think that we need to be full steam ahead on this. If I could respond to the banners? So five days ago, I sent a message to NTSA, when, when are the banners gonna be done? At that time, they said between four and seven days. So banners should be done within the next couple of days. At that point, we give the banners over to the city and they're gonna begin putting them up.
Are they already put up?
Yes, exactly, yes.
Uh, Mr. Russell?
Yeah, you know, we had a meeting, I had a weekly meeting with Mr. Delino on Friday and I invited some other people to attend, other people to attend. And one of the things that was said in the meeting that I didn't like was, you know, we just have to build a good program and they will come. And it's like, that's the old way of thinking, that's the old school way of thinking. We can't just build it and expect people to show up. That's just not how the 21st century operates. We need to always continually be pushing our district because it's still, we still have that negative rep, it's still out there. The negative perception is still out there. I just had a talk with somebody at, at Pico Boys the other day, well, I went, I went to school with them back in the eighties. He's, he's telling me, wow, you know our Rancho, you know our Rancho. I said, no, you don't know our Rancho. You don't know our Rancho because you haven't been there. But he sends his kids to Willier, you know? And I, and I gave him my card, I said, look, man, we need to talk because I need your help. I need you going around giving the same perceptions of what our Rancho used to be because it's not the same Rancho when we went there, it's not. But that attitude, if we're just gonna build a good program and they're gonna come to us, it just doesn't work that way anymore. We have to have a marketing plan and it has to be included in our budget. That's just the way it has to be from this point moving forward for our Rancho, for Allen Ochoa, for all of our schools. It's like what we talked about, you know, working with our real estate agents in the city because when people move to the city, what's the first thing they ask? What schools, what are the schools like? So we gotta give them that information. We gotta give them our graduation rates, we gotta give them our college, our A through G graduates, we gotta give that information out. So I appreciate that, that you are doing this and that you understand the importance of this and where we need to go. And not everybody sees it like this, you know, but we're, we're playing catch-up. Our district is playing catch-up. But so I commend you for doing that, but this, this is a reality that we're just gonna have to deal with and we're gonna continue to work in this way.
Yeah, also, I, I called, when, I called Villalnue because they're, they're always doing a lot of marketing for, for their college. And I asked that president, Travis, about their PR person. They actually have a full-time PR person who they pay over a hundred thousand dollars plus an assistant. I know when I work at Willier, when I work at Willier Union High School District, each of the schools had a PR person. So we were able to publicize the things we were doing in each one of the schools. So I think it's, it's way overdue. And thank you for the budget you presented and we're gonna continue moving forward and showcase.
Mr. Villalnue, thank you. What I have a question about is I understand that we, we have billboard designs for eleven hundred and five dollars under the NTS Communications.
Yes.
I understand there's a billboard off of the five freeway.
Correct.
How much is that? I mean, that's not the design, that's actual renting of the billboard, so how much is that?
The actual billboard is, I mean, both of those, I believe, was nine thousand, was it five hundred? Six? Nine thousand six hundred, there were two billboards, total of nine thousand six hundred.
And how long will those billboards be displayed in Allen Ochoa?
Sure. One billboard will be displayed for approximately fifteen days, the other billboard will be displayed for forty-two days.
Okay, so when, let's see. I haven't seen, you talked about the printing, the information in the local newspaper under the other session. And I haven't seen in our Friday updates, any evidence to show what exactly was put out. You, you mentioned a different, a couple of different newspapers, but I haven't seen them, maybe because I don't get the newspaper, I'll get any newspaper that do everything online, but I haven't seen it online either. And I do know that occasionally when you're purchasing a hat in the paper.
Give a direction to Mr. Fritos to move forward. So you know what, that would be the other side, so I would need to come back, so I can bring the information back to the board on that at the next meeting.
Okay, so as a follow-up, the five hundred thousand dollars that Mr. Fritos referred to, is that going into the superintendent's budget, discretionary money?
Not really discretionary, well, I'm gonna be discretionary money, it says needs come up within our schools. If I'm not mistaken, I think one of the things we did this year was we, I'm not sure if that came out of there, was the music teacher we had at North Park Academy of Arts, when there's instruments requests that come up from schools. It's really more, it's really more cabinets, would request a maybe cabinet for various things that need to get done in the district.
Well, if I was to request all the information paid from that fund, what then, how would I name it? Or what would I call it? Or what would the public call it in order to, to get information like this?
Cabinet discretionary fund, I guess you could say. I don't know, I don't know how business, business, how you would, the business office would designate that, that fund.
In most districts, it's simply a general fund expense. The reason why we did it the way we did it is we didn't want the general fund to work in isolation. We wanna present the end balance as a complete amount at every interim report. So we segmented a portion of the general fund without a title, it really does not have a title because it's just general fund monies that are used for things that the school budgets cannot cover in the budget that they have. So a good example were the marquees. If you recall, at one point, we wanted to do all the marquees. Superintendent guided us through a process of doing three a year. That's a good example of something that goes out of there. The schools don't have enough funding, there is no targeted funding or granting for it, so it would come straight out of general fund. And the reason why we also wanted to keep it as a five hundred thousand, is that if we exceeded it, we could report to the superintendent that the amount was exceeded. And if you remember, when we started the year, we were a little bit more limited in funding because the one-time money was not secure till the end of the year. The district can also choose yes to do it out of general fund. We just wanted to make sure that we tracked it a little more precisely.
So when we pay, as a follow-up, and someone would pay our auditing firms, the amount of money we pay to audit them, how would this money be captured or be reported so that we can make sure that we don't have five hundred thousand dollars sitting in a piggy bank someplace?
Yeah, maybe I didn't explain myself, but it is not a piggy bank, it's general fund expense. So as any other general fund expense, it is tracked through the purchase orders that we do. Every month, the board approves the purchase orders out of general fund. And whether we segment an amount, if you remember the way our budget worked, you have all the allocated amounts, then there's unallocated and there are areas where we have reserves. This is simply an allocation, it's part of the end balance. So the way the auditor will check it is general fund expenditures that are part of the end balance. And that's the way it should be done. So it doesn't belong to a department or a school, it simply needs it to rise throughout the year. As Mr. Lino said, next year, if we segment, let's say, X amount, there is no indication in a budget of what will be procured with it during the year. If the board decides to do some marketing, marketing can be, if we buy more marquees, more marquees, if there's opposition that needs to be secured during the year. So this is one of those that's for a need during the year. Most districts just say, general fund, we wanted to make sure that we reported to the superintendent, if it's over five hundred, we, we have reached that.
Well, I'm just a little concerned because we don't have a title for it and.
What we do is general fund expenditure.
Right, but it's taken aside and it's not incorporated in the general fund money. So when we're looking at, well, let's say we, we have two million dollars in the general fund, we actually have maybe two million, two hundred thousand because, depending on what was spent from the separate fund, it, it's like, it's, it sounds to me like it's pigeonholed.
There is no separate fund, it is general fund. The only thing we're doing is tracking for the superintendent, it doesn't appear in the budget as a separate amount. Every month, when the board approves a general fund expenditure, it comes out there. So I wanna make sure that I'm very clear, there is no separate budget. We're just tracking every month, we're reporting. Tomorrow, the board were to say, buy another marquee. This year, all the budgets are done, so it would come out of general fund. It's exactly the same. These are expenditures that are above and beyond the planned throughout the year.
Okay, so and just to clarify, I believe the board approved, when they put the Allen Ochoa Magnet School Prep Academy, that they also have approved a budget. Am I correct in that? So then, if, if we have a budget for the Allen Ochoa Prep Academy and shouldn't these, I, be reported under that budget? Because that's kind of where we gave the direction to go ahead and do that. The other thing is, Mr. Delino, as a superintendent, he has a lot of discretion as to how he spends his money and he doesn't have to depend on the board all the time. And so I know Mr. Lotta referred to banners, wanting banners, and I've seen banners, but he must be talking about a different type of banner because obviously the banners I've seen aren't consistent, but he's just, or he's sleeping in his mind because you told him that he, you don't have banners. So I guess what I'm asking is, on some of this stuff, it sounds like it's discretionary money that Mr. Delino has and some of these expenditures under, under the district marketing headline that you have here on this, on this chart, but some of it was also agreed to be paid out of the Allen Ochoa Academy budget.
None of the Allen Ochoa budget that I developed contained marketing because it was impossible for me to predict. If you recall, what we discussed were equipment, materials, staffing, and basically the beginning of a school, to buy all the procurement necessary to develop a brand new school. Marketing is something that is being approved as we go. So again, it's a general fund expenditure, every purchase order is approved by the board, so you're technically approving the, the request as they go. But we didn't build it into the budget, except for some signs. We, at the beginning, had some signs that were placed around the school, we built that into the budget. But the procurement of any marketing campaign, there was no way for me to predict what those costs would be. So we basically developed a budget for the beginning of that school and marketing for all our schools is a general fund expense that's developed as the expenditures come in.
Okay, and just this, just to kind of remind you, I wasn't here for the business, so I apologize, but I just wanna be clear, so when we approved the budget, it's after the money that's already been spent, is that correct?
Not for the charter, the board approved it in advance.
Mr. Lotta?
I'm on the board, I still have the floor, I didn't give it up.
We need to move on.
Yes.
Well, we might need to move on, but I have very important questions.
It seems like the questions you're asking, because you have failed to attend meetings, maybe you should, you should make an appointment to meet with Mr. Fritos and get him for the information that you missed because you have missed meetings.
Oh, thank you very much for that, but when other board members have missed meetings, I've been here and I've been very courteous and I've extended, extended the courtesy of not interrupting them, even though they missed four meetings and were repeating the information, especially when we're talking about the facilities and master plan, because I know that it's important that they must miss several of their meetings, they had to repeat information. But this has to do, this is for the public and it's being recorded so it can be released to the public. This is, this is not an item that I'm just going up, I'm on target and I'm on topic and I should be allowed to speak because, without being interrupted, because what happens is we do have a board policy that says we should run these meetings professionally without being interrupted. And yet, you're the one, and you're yet the one who is interrupting. And there's nothing in there that says it's three minutes.
Okay, we're gonna move on.
So, I, I, let me just finish, let me finish, Mrs. Delon, please. I know patience is a virtue and I've been asking for a long time.
Do you want to move to the business of the day?
Point of order, no.
Yes.
Excuse me, I haven't been talking.
We will move on to item four B.
Point of order, Mr. Lotta did not have the floor to speak and he's violating the Brown Act once again, and so is Mrs. Delon.
Okay, will you go on to item four B?
To the superintendent and I will demand a cure and correct because this is a way to silence a board member who has legitimate questions about our budget. And the rude comments that are being made to me are, are just, uh, uh, from this board, basically require that, that other people just start getting frustrated because I couldn't hear what I'm saying. So I would think that if you handled the meeting the way you're supposed to, Mrs. Delon, then we wouldn't be in the situation where you're interrupting me.
Dr. Moreno, I just pause to please.
Point of order.
Go to the order.
Point of order.
The business of the day, the Allen Ochoa Prep Academy is not on the agenda. But if we allow our board members to continue to talk about it.
Excuse me, point of order. He, well, he needs to be acknowledged before he starts talking. Secondly, I have the floor, I did not relinquish the floor. Thirdly, I get to talk about the Allen Ochoa marketing and camp, communication campaign because guess what? It's being presented today. So, but let's just move on without Mr. Lotta interrupting unnecessarily. Fritos, I appreciate the time that you were.
Please, please.
I appreciate.
Immediately, please.
Point of order, point of order.
We need to go back to study session, item four B.
Point of order, we have a board, a Brown Act violation here because I have the floor to, and, and, and that violation, a board policy that says that you cannot just interrupt a board member when they're speaking, you have to wait your turn. So I just don't, but, no, I don't want to get into discussion with you, Mrs. Delon, because right now, I just wanna focus on getting my questions answered.
Well, then you should make an appointment with Mr. Fritos.
No, this is a public meeting and I wanna ask it in public, I'm entitled to ask it in public, the public has a right to hear it and you are interrupting. So please, just give me a couple of minutes, I couldn't finish my question right now. Thank you.
Dr. Lotta, we'll talk on the order again.
So Mr. Point of Order, he wasn't called out, he needs to be called out. He, he has not been called out to speak. I have the floor, I have not relinquished the floor, I have one more question for Mr. Lotta.
We need to move on to item four B.
Excuse me, no, you are violating the Brown Act and I've told you multiple times, you're violating the Brown Act. I, I know you got the book, but I would really appreciate it if you read it because then it wouldn't be causing this frustration with regards to.
Let's go to item four B, please.
Which, which is causing all this.
Bond survey.
Because you are not allowing the public to get financial information about our school[1715.83] about our school district regarding... Don't interrupt me, for goodness sakes, you're out of line. And I would really wish you would stop interrupting because you don't have to do anything. I don't agree with everything you said, but I don't sit here and interrupt.
We need to stop, we need to continue this meeting.
And I don't take my hat. Mr. Fritos, I want to know about the budget and what we spent on Alan Ochoa Academy. Is there any way I can get that information next week or this week?
Alan Ochoa is not on the agenda.
Alan Ochoa is on the agenda, you presented it.
If, if Miss Control and it's more information, I would suggest that you provide the budget that you presented for Alan Ochoa. And at this point, we will move to item 4B, bond survey update.
Well, I still, my objection still stands and the fact that you want to violate my right, you want to violate the Brown Act and you want to violate the board policies that we are sworn to uphold, then my objection still stands.
And so on the survey that we've done to the community, what we've done is, if you remember, board members, that you approved TBWB Strategies to be the firm that would do the survey along with 12 Chen Research. That survey began March 11th, 2016.
Do we have any documentation for that?
No, no documentation, this is all verbal. The telephone surveys began March 11th, 2016. The surveys are almost completed. They should be completed, I'm thinking, probably by this Thursday or at least we're going to get an update by this Thursday. According to the gentleman, according to Jared Boygan, who is the individual who is representing TBWB Strategies, at this point, there are 244 completed surveys. And on the surveys, two questions were being asked to determine from our community to the degree they were interested in moving forward with a bond for the, for our rancher high school and really, really rancher high schools the focus. But also making sure that if we needed some things done in other schools, that there's any way for that. But it also comes down to what is the, what is the voter really, or the likely voter, really going to support or not support. The second question is being asked also to determine, are the likely voters within the city of Pico Rivera also interested in approving a parcel tax? And so questions are related to these two items. There's a series of many questions that are asked and based on the responses, the survey company then moves to either another question or another statement. And through this research-based survey strategy, they're able at the end to provide, will be able to provide to the board, and we will have a board meeting on that, to provide data back to the board to say, "Here is the data from the survey. This is, based on our information, these are some of the recommendations we might make." Don't know what those recommendations are going to be at this point. But once we get the information from the survey, we will then, at that point, provide that information to the board. And at that point, the board will make a decision. And I'll make a recommendation if we go forward or not on any, either of these two or both.
Thank you, Mr. Gilindo. Board bylaws, 9005, section 8, number 3, addresses to recognize and respect differences of perspective and style on the board and among staff, students, plans and community. I would ask at this point if Mr. Gilindo could provide us the information you just reported out verbally and writing. And not unless I have to do a public records request for that, Mr. Gilindo. I'd like to provide that.
Dr. Medino?
Mr. Gilindo said that this service having conducted verbally and there is no documents, official documents. Can you tell us why? And the first question, second question also is, what's the sample population? How are community members, members of the community selected to do a survey pretty much? And I have a follow-up question to that.
Okay, so I think your first question was, is why aren't there copies of the survey? To me, that at this point, I think could take the process. So I don't want to bring that forward into any particular meeting. I don't want the, the way they, they're doing the research to put out questions. If somebody were to get somehow the questions in advance, I think that could, and it could happen. So I don't, I'm not sharing those questions with the board. Just letting you know that based on the work we've done, the survey company takes care of that. We reviewed the questions that we're going to ask. And then based on that review, then they do the survey of the community.
Do the community members state the questions or is it just...
No, this is just, this is just, this is just district staff along with our, along with TBWB Strategies. Along with one board member, I invited Mr. Rosco to be part of that group to look at the questions, to make sure from a board pers, or from an individual perspective from the board, to look at those questions. And the questions were developed by the survey firm. All we did was say, does this seem like the right questions for the Pico Rivera community?
And we have to rely on the expertise of this firm that we...
Correct.
That we retain. However, I'm still concerned in terms of how the surveys have been conducted. And I'm speaking for myself. If I were approached as a member of the community or surveyed, I should say, I'm a visual person. I have a better understanding, I can better process information if I see it and I can provide better feedback and responses as opposed to someone just asking me and having me respond to questions. So I'm not, and I do have a marketing background and I do understand surveys. I have conducted UNI surveys myself. So I would think that to get a true picture, snapshot of the community, community members will need to be given the option to, to see the questions, number one. Secondly, not, I don't know how much information has gone out there in terms of we're going to be putting up, you know, looking at a bond to continue with the implementation of the master plan. But I think that we, since we're on the marketing piece of the district, I don't know how much information has gone out to the community so that when these surveys or these home calls come around, committee members at least know what, what the district, where the district is at and what they're doing. Just not having enough information, I'm not comfortable with that.
Usually, usually with the firm, the firm is, what we did is, we contracted with a firm, a professional firm who does this for a living.
Right.
Based on their work that they do for a living. They did telephone, they're doing the telephone surveys. I'm, I'm not going to get into if that's the way it should be done, if it should be done in writing or not. I don't have a marketing background. But alls I know is from a survey perspective, they, that's why we contracted with them. So, and the way they do it is if a person is comfortable enough to speak with them on the phone, they carry on with the survey. If the person isn't, that is nixed at that point, that information is not used. All they can use are surveys that get to the end of the final question. Based on that, then that's the information they use. And because it's scientific, they, based on the 300 or so calls they're making or completed, completed calls and surveys they get, they're able to provide some type of statistical information that's usually pretty right on, on recommending to a school board or any type of entity on the direction they should take. I understand what you're saying about having something in writing and I'm similar. I'm going on the expertise of a company saying this is, this is how the normal way it's done to get the information from likely voters. 300, oh, 300 completed surveys, whatever it takes to get 300 completed surveys. There's 19,000, there's 19,000 voters, likely voters in Pico Rivera. Of that, whatever it takes to get 300 surveys, if you have to call 600 homes, 1,000 homes, 2,000 homes, it doesn't matter as long as 300 surveys come out and they're randomly selected. Okay, you don't just go down, you know, A, B, you randomly select, based on the random selection, that's where you're then able to make a good determination from a research perspective, which direction should a district possibly move in.
So it's a total of 300 responses.
Completed surveys.
Completed surveys.
Correct.
Mr. Rosco?
Yeah, I was on this committee and basically, we're not going to go out to the community until we have a good feel on the survey. We can't put, start telling everybody about our program if we're not confident enough with our survey results to even move forward. The survey results may say, "We're not ready to do this." Okay, so we have to do the survey result, the survey first. And this is our voting population in the city of Pico Rivera. Okay, and so they are randomly selected. The companies that came before us, there were three of them, with combined over 100 years of experience doing surveys. If you combine all their wealth experience. We chose a company that is very well reputable in presidential campaigns, in campaigns across the state, statewide proposition campaigns and survey. So we're deferring to the experts on this. We're not going to tell them how to do their job, because that's not our job. It's their expertise and then we're taking their expertise on how, their methodology and their approach and their process. So we're going with them. And once we get that, once we get that information, then we can decide if we're going to move forward with this and then present it to the community. But we have to get the numbers back first on both the things that we can possibly do to transform this district and change this district and move this district to an entirely different place than where it is. And we, when they came to us, we had some discussions on what the specifics were, the verbiage was in the survey. And one of them, I will tell you, we were very specific in saying we want to rebuild our rancher. And rebuild means exactly what it says. Not modernize it, not improve it, rebuild. Rebuild is very specific. So in some areas, we basically said, "No, we, we want this to go out." We want it to be very specific. But understand that we're deferring to the experts on this. You know, there's nobody in-house that is a marketing expert on survey. That's why we went out, out to do this. We did it through the process. We were very diligent and we interviewed all three finalists. And we thoroughly interviewed them. And we picked who we think, not only who's going to help us now, but who's going to help us in the middle of a campaign, during the campaign and well beyond after the campaign, relationship that that may be built. So I really want you to understand, Dr. Medino, that what we're trying to do is really move this district and our rancher high school and everything that comes with it into a much better, different place. And I mean to a higher level, higher level. So I want you to understand and trust that what we're doing is in, is in the best terms of the community, the community. But it's all dependent on the results of the survey. That's going to help us, help guide us to where we need to go. So we need to do the survey first before we go out into the community.
Mr. Lotta?
And so I appreciate that because, I mean, the conversation is still, do we even go out for a bond? Do we even go out for a parcel tax? Do we even go out for that? Like, the question, we haven't asked the community that, but we want, on the survey, I, I want to get good data and I want as much good data as possible. And if, if only 300, I'm just like, only 300 surveys? I would hope for a lot more. Be that as it may, I'm not a professional pollster. If, if, if 300 is a good sample, then 300 would be, is okay by me. I'm just concerned, the only concern I would have is voters versus likely voters. Those are two different worlds. So I'm not sure if they're doing likely voters or I'm not sure if they're just doing eligible voters. Like, that to me, that to me is a big difference. And I'm sure they're doing likely voters, so.
Likely voters.
Yeah, and the definition of likely voter changes. So likely voters is somebody voted last election or somebody voted two elections in a row, I don't know. But I'm going to, I'm going to leave it to the firm to, that, that, that we did our due diligence, that, that that's moved forward. And I really do want as much of, what's called a neutral, untainted data as possible. So I'd rather not look at the questions myself. I'd rather the questions be asked, get that data back. But I do at the end want to see the questions. Once, once the survey's over, like, I do want to make sure we get those questions because that helps me evaluate, that helps all of us evaluate the validity, the, the weight of that data. And that's just for me, it's like a standardized test. It's one snapshot, one, on one day. Because those voters on a different day could say something totally different. It gives a snapshot of where the community is and then we have to discuss and have conversations with a lot of different partners. The business community, you know, the, what's it called? The civic organizations, the labor, our labor partners, et cetera. This is something we're going to do to transform our rancher. And there's going to be people out there that are going to be working against our rancher. So people don't want our ranch to succeed. And they're doing everything possible to not have our ranch to succeed. And that's unfortunate. But I think it's our job to protect our rancher, to move our ranch forward. And I think this, taking these steps is, is the right thing to do. So I'm not sure if we're going for a bond or not. It's kind of premature to talk to the community about a bond if we're not. We haven't made that decision yet. And I think that, that, I, I appreciate the update and I think we should continue getting updates at every board meeting as this continues going.
I have a question, but I want to give you...
No, I always thought, so I'd like to do what you're going to do, the question that I'm going to make. What you said, so far your question, so...
Who's next?
She's, she's...
Did I ask her?
She asked it.
Okay.
Okay.
I don't want to be anyone to take what I'm saying out of context. When I'm questioning something, it is not because there's lack of trust. It is simply because I need to know. And, and I do understand and, and I do support the bond. Why? Because I want to see our ranch to succeed. And I know that the only way to really fully bring our master plan to fruition and see fundamental changes will be with the past response. So I want to put that out there. However, I do want to proceed in a way that I understand it, not only as a board member, but as a community member as well. So yes, I agree with you, Mr. Lotta. I do want to see the final results. It's settling for me when I hear that we're relying on the expertise of, of, you know, of those that come to, to the district because, and I want to go back to what we said at a previous meeting, we rely on the expertise and we got ourselves into trouble. This is my community. And if I, and if, and if someone comes into my community, you know, the way I see it now, it's, it's, the way we're proceeding, it's secretive already. That's me speaking. No, we're not going to put it out there. We don't want anybody to know. You know, I, I don't work that way. I need, I need to know, I need to be informed. I don't want to be chasing information. I understand we don't want to change the data, but I'm perfectly okay with how this firm is proceeding in their survey. That's fine. They're the experts. I'm just, it's just, an uncomfortable feeling I'm beginning to experience here because, you know, this, this trust and understanding, I understand it fully. I trust my board member colleagues fully. I will support it. I do support what we're doing here. It is just, you know, the, the weight's coming down, I'm not comfortable with that.
Could it, could it be, I'm going to take a turn. Would it be, Dr. Medino, that you just don't understand the process and that's what you, what you would like more information? Because whenever a community goes out for a bond and a survey consultant is hired, and that's not just Pico Rivera, it's Weydier, it's everywhere, that there's no, they have to be as independent as possible when they conduct the survey. So it's not something that we can sit down with them and say, "Okay, let me see your questions" and all of that. If they cease to be independent, they cease to be effective. And I think maybe for us as board members, maybe there are some board members who don't understand that process and that's what we need to, to understand more than anything is, at what point do the board members become involved in the process? Because to be involved in the survey is really, at least what I know about bonds, it's not acceptable because then they're not independent. It's not an independent survey.
Mrs. Gilindo?
May I respond to your question? The process of going out after a bond? I did work, you know, I did, I was on the bond committee for a couple of years, but that was after the fact. So then what I'm saying here is perhaps, and I don't know, the rest of the board members have the full understanding that the process should have happened explained so that we, so that I could have a better understanding and, you know, and be taking more time to say, "Okay, tell me about it," or, or, "Question me." So that's, that's probably true. But what I do need to know is before, and I understand we need to know, but we need to have a good sense, a pulse of a community if they're going to support a bond or not. What I do like, would like to know is, again, I'm going to go back to the budget, how much money has been allocated to, to know whether we are going to move forward or not? So there is, we already have a budget set with, with the survey and what we're doing before we even go out there and start going after the bond.
I'm not sure, your question is how much money...
How much money are we spending to put out the bond?
We're, we're not putting out a bond.
To, to go after the bond.
We're not going after a bond. The money that, the money that we've, that this, that we have set aside based on the contract that was at the last board meeting, I believe was in the neighborhood of about, was it 16, 17,000 dollars, Mr. Fritos?
It was...
9,600 plus...
9,600 for the survey plus the amount to provide additional services.
I think 48,000 more. So I think it was about 17, so I believe it was about 17,000. I won't give the exact figure. That's how much we're spending for this company to help us understand is now the right time to go for a bond and/or parcel tax? That's what we're doing. We're not, we're not going after a bond per se.
And you're right, you answered my question.
Okay.
So reframing it, what I was after is, okay, how much are we spending for, you know, the survey? Or, or for the initiative to say, okay, we are going to go after a bond or not? So what I was saying is, in the vicinity of 17,000.
Correct. And I'd have to go back to the last board item, but I think it's about that amount.
Okay.
We'll move to the last one.
Correct.
Mr. Cantola?
I, I believe that based on some of the comments that have been made in the past by the current board members, there's definitely been a belief that there was lack of transparency by previous board members, previous cabinet members, previous superintendents, but, and I have to say that surveys are done all the time, and they're done in, in writing, and I don't know why a board member is not entitled to know what the questions are. We were elected, I know what 19,000 voters looks like, I know what 6,000 voters look like, I've tried making those phone calls, so I know a lot of those phone calls aren't gonna work. So I, so I, I support the, the process, I don't think that asking for the survey questions is interfering with the company that we hired to do the work, as long as we don't contact them and ask them to change a question, or to explain a question, that's not our position. Our position is to, oh, okay, I understand the questions, we may not like the questions, because we want part of that process, but you know what, they are what they are, and we're entitled to hear it. If one board member has, has the information about what the questions are, then all board members should have it. And so I do have to support Dr. Merino, in that it's not the process, it's the lack of information, and when we really get questioned by people in the public, and we say, we don't know, that doesn't wanna make it, look, make us look well, because we're, we're elected to represent the community, and if you don't trust your board members, Mr. Belendo, then you really have problems.
Other comments? Any last one?
So, one of the things I will do, Dr. Merino, just to let you know, is I will find out from the company, to the degree that's ever done ahead of time, that copies are shared. In my estimation, that's not something you do, or maybe they'll tell me something different.
Mr. Lotta?
I'm happy with capital the copies at the end of the survey, I'll do that.
So, let's, let's move on, public comments on post-session items. Don't have any public comments, so at this point, we'll adjourn into post-session.
Mr. Guevara, let's go, you have a piece of comments. Here we go again.
Okay, so I'll pull it over my house later.
I apologize for that, we're not gonna apologize again. Are you still rolling? Good. Get it all on tape.